Time is six thirty-one. The city, the date is Tuesday, June second, twenty twenty. The City of East Cleveland Regular Council Meeting via Zoom is now called to order. Dr. Guy, can you call the roll, please?
Councilor Martin.
Present.
Counselor Stevenson.
Present.
Counselor Smith.
Present.
Uh, so far, we do not have Counselor Austin or Counselor Gowdy on the line. Uh, we have our Law Director, Willa Hemmons.
Yes.
Mayor King.
Hello.
President and Keisha Chambers from O H M just joined us.
Okay, thank you. Next, we have remarks of the public on agenda items, only two minutes, please. Any of our great public out there.
Have one, Justin is on the line.
Uh, no, thank you. Thanks anyway.
Alrighty, thank you. And then, we move on to minutes to be approved. Dr. Guy, please.
Uh, yeah, the first is, uh, April fourteenth, twenty twenty, Finance Committee. Uh, you all received all these, uh, some weeks ago. And they have been hit, hit the corrections made.
Yeah, I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the April fourteenth, twenty twenty Finance Committee meeting minute.
I move to approve the April fourteenth, twenty twenty Finance Committee minutes.
It's been moved, do we have a second?
I second it.
Thank you, Councilman, Dr. Guy.
Hey, Councilor Martin.
Yay.
Counselor Stevenson.
Yay.
And Counselor Smith.
Yay.
Okay, April fourteenth, twenty twenty Finance Committee, uh, minutes are approved. Next is the April sixteenth, twenty twenty Agenda Review. I move to approve the April sixteenth Agenda Review. Meeting minutes.
I second that motion.
Hey, Counselor Martin.
Yay.
Counselor Stevenson.
Yay.
Counselor Smith.
Yay.
Okay, April sixteenth, twenty twenty Agenda Reviews approved. Next is the April twenty-first, twenty twenty Regular Council Meeting Minutes.
I move to approve the April twenty-first Regular Council Meeting Minutes.
I second the motion.
Hey, Counselor Martin.
Yay.
Counselor Stevenson.
Yay.
Counselor Smith.
Yay.
And lastly, is the April thirtieth, twenty twenty Agenda Review Minutes.
Your turn, Martin.
Where we at now? April thirtieth. Uh, I moved the, uh, April thirtieth, twenty twenty Agenda Review Minutes be approved.
I second.
Hey, Counselor Martin.
Yay.
Counselor Stevenson.
Yay.
Counselor Smith.
Yay.
Okay, the April thirtieth, twenty twenty minutes have been approved.
Thank you ver- thank you all very much. Next, we have reports and announcements from Mayor Brandon L. King. Mayor King?
Thank you, Council President. I'd like to start off with nobody minds, with just a brief, uh, moment of silence for Mr. George Floyd. All of the civil unrest, especially the peaceful unrest that was, uh, demonstrated amongst, uh, around the country, I should say, how important it is to, uh, exercise our liberties in that manner, so that our voices heard. Okay, thank you. Now, as for report, again, we're still under the coronavirus pandemic, COVID nineteen, and the Governor updates this almost daily. Most of the economy is back open. I would encourage viewers now, and anyone may see this, to go to the state's website and, and look for the updates there, because those are, that's probably the best place to get your updates. Again, City Hall still has limited access, as we are not fully prepared to abide by all of the rules and regulations that are to be put in place per the Governor, the one. We've been doing a number of tele-town halls, and we will be hosting one later this month. To get on that call, on the list to get on that call, please call two one six six eight one two two one one to get your name added to that list. Food pantry, we'll talk more about that here shortly, but our next food pantry will be next Tuesday, that's six nine, and we have a couple of new things going on with that. Just brief mention, with the testing, we were able to do the COVID testing, we're here to do, able to do here in the city, so that our residents, who overwhelmingly, it was like ninety-seven percent, uh, voted that they wanted COVID testing, and, uh, just real quick, I'd like to thank Mike. Uh, Mike, you gonna raise your hand? Mike is, uh, double duty here, he's actually here for a piece of legislation with the cornerstone, but it is through Mike, the relationships with Governor DeWine and Jobs Ohio, but particularly the relationship with Mike and cornerstone, that we were able to bring that testing to this community. We are working on a third round of testing, uh, scheduled tentatively for two weeks from now. And again, that's Genesis Reference Laboratory, that's one of our, that's our partner that's doing the testing. Back to the food pantry, so, because we're doing such a phenomenal job with the food pantry, we've been getting, uh, recognition around the cities nearby and throughout the county. There's been a number of partners who want to team with us to provide, uh, fruit, food to our residents. So, uh, next week, again, next Tuesday, we'll be doing the food pantry. Uh, this one, we're gonna organize with some new partners, we actually do have a new location. For those of you who wish to volunteer, please call my office, and we will get you set up to volunteer, uh, for these, for this food distribution. Again, I'd like to thank all the people who donated in the past, and all the people who volunteered. Our Council Vice President, who gets a gold star, she showed up at every food pantry. In regards to our city finances, I have in my notes that Aaron Jordan, uh, many of you know the COVID and the state and the county have announced upwards of twenty to forty percent in the reduction of revenues. I put Aaron Jordan on here because it is very much up in the air how that final number will shake out. I would encourage you to attend the next, uh, Fiscal Commission meeting, in which we will have a better idea of what our revenue reduction may look like, and, and quite frankly, with the years, and with other legislation that's coming through the federal government, state government, all this coming from the treasury, uh, a lot of the loss in revenues will be made up across the different cities, including East Cleveland. So, there's been a lot of traction in that going on, so just stay tuned for the finances. East Cleveland Tow Yards still in progress, and as I've mentioned, I did deliver these down to council, so you should have them. Uh, please, tell anyone you know, we were at a meeting yesterday, and a resident was complaining about a boat that's just sitting in a lot next to her, a bunch of cars on the other side of her. She can't use her backyard, so your neighbors are concerned about that. Also, with the tow yard, we did mention that we put out a request for a proposal, a request for pricing. It was due on the twenty-eighth, those have come in and they are being reviewed. I believe that council is on the reviewing committee, I am not, but it will be coming in front of council to be voted on, hopefully shortly, so we can continue to move this thing forward. E C Services has started, I would ask again, as I do every year, have patience with the first couple cuts, the first month. Because of the rain, we usually get grass upwards of four to five feet high. By the end of the first month, we do have it under control, and then it's managed for the rest of the, uh, grass growing year. Many of you have seen the new piece of equipment that the council voted on, we worked on it for over, over eight months before we finally got that situated. And it, it is in the service yard, we are getting training for the service employees to run that equipment. I had the opportunity to run it myself, so excellent piece of equipment, it will serve us well here in the city. Today, they started hot patching, I'm sure some of you saw that, we've been chasing this hot patch machine. Thought we had it fixed last year, it wasn't, it is fixed now, they were out today, hot patching. They are cold patching, the groundhog guy is out, street lights, new street lights are up, as well as uh, new poles, and I'd like to take, take this opportunity to tell you to take a look at the LEDs and let us know what you think, because we are replacing all of the halogen lights with the LEDs, and for a good look at that, from Chapman, clear down to Allendale, on Euclid, on the south side of the street, are all LEDs. And you'll see the white versus the yellow of the, uh, halogen. Leaf pickup continues, demolitions continue, tree service has continued. Many of you have seen the new street signs, more are going up, more are on order. We do have new welcome to East Cleveland signs that are up. Thankfully, they have started putting up the new traffic control signals, they look awesome. I would encourage you to, when you see them, take a good look at it, we put in a lot of hard work as elected officials to get this traffic control thing situated. Again, it was passed two thousand twelve, two thousand twelve, but it took two thousand seventeen and us working together to kind of move this thing forward to get it where it's at. Council President, that concludes my report, unless there are any questions or concerns of you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Next, we have receipt of communication and witnesses.
I'm sorry, Council, uh, President.
Yes, sir.
Your other council person is here, she did walk into my report, I just wanted to acknowledge her, bring her into the view here.
Thank you very much, Councilwoman Wani Da Gowdy is acknowledged, also, I saw Councilman Tim Austin online.
Our council members are present, um, far as communications, no new communications, but, um, your mailboxes are full, so if you, I could please empty your mailboxes in the office. Be greatly appreciated.
Thank you very much, Dr. Guy. Next, we have, uh, reports of council committees, Councilwoman Gowdy.
I'm with appointments. I can hear you.
You want me to give you a quote on your committee?
Oh, okay, um. I had, uh, a meeting that last month had tried to take place with a police officer. They got fired, and I really wanted her to come and share with us on Zoom what actually happened. Well, it did quite happen, because I had got notice from Willa saying that she had a suit against us, or, or she can't, you know, Willa could not come, or the mayor could not come on the behalf, and the meeting didn't take place. But she do still want to come, and I do want her on personnel and appointments when it's time. We, I'm asking, during that time, could we go back into the chamber of council? So we can have the public to come back in, so they can actually express they self, because they don't, a lot of our citizens do not do so. Now, all the bars is open, the stores is open, the liquor store is open, and a lot of these businesses is open. We need council to be open. So, my report is, I'm going to revisit that, because it's no suit there, and she don't have nothing right now, but I really want her to come and appear in front of council. And I'm looking forward to having that meeting with her next time when, uh, my meeting is over. So.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Councilwoman Gowdy. Councilman Lake Paulier Martin?
Yeah, health and safety, uh, I need to say that, uh, police issues are paramount around, not only around the country, around the world right now, because of the George Floyd situation. And we can recall seven and a half years ago, Timothy Russell, Melissa Williams, and just recently, uh, to meet a chaplain with these police chasers. I'm working on and talking to some attorneys, and I'm going to be introducing, uh, some legislation around some rules when they fly through our city, uh, out of control. Uh, I'm putting a lot of time in it, and I'm talking, and I have lawyers in my family, and, uh, uh, I think it's, it's time for us to do it, I, I think, uh, Corrine Stevens is aware of someone, what, what we're trying to do to some extent. But I've been working on this now, maybe about two, three weeks. Uh, but I, I really want to present this in front of, uh, the entire council, once we get a definitive thing, because it, it's gotta be approved by you guys. Uh, but this chase situation has got to come to an end, where they're flying through our city, uh, chasing people on, on minor issues and killing people behind it. Uh, our country's in a bad state right now, we have poverty, police are triggering this. And this is nothing new, this has been going on for years, hundreds of years in this country, when it comes to African Americans. I can think back to Tulsa, Oklahoma, when we had it going good, and they burned it down. So there's a racism issue involved. So, I'm basically, for the most part, pleased with our police from the standpoint of, they showed a lot of restraint yesterday, and basically, most of them are good police officers. But I was listening to the radio today, and they talked about how important it is that police have conversations with people, instead of putting their necks on them and all that, and then follow, uh, people have rights, that's what makes this country what it is. So that's something, I haven't done anything in the last month or so, because of the pandemic. But, uh, I'm gonna work with all of you, if I can, to see if we can come up with some solid, uh, legislation in terms of police chasers in our city, and hopefully it will work. It's always about enforcement. Uh, that's all I have to say about health and safety. Dr. Guy, I'm thinking about trying to maybe sit down, uh, in the next couple of days or next week, uh, to just have a discussion on this. Uh, I, I'll get with you and, uh, Gowdy and all the other council people to see if we can do something, maybe, if not this week, next week, and, and provide with you what I have in writing, I have about four or five pages of stuff in writing, but I'm tweaking it, going through it, to make it more precise, more concise. Uh, I do want to close on the fact that I think that our city, under the current leadership, especially Brandon King is doing pretty good, in terms of our police and the restraint that they show. Uh, uh, we had a few mining incidents this past weekend, but they were mining nothing like what took place down in Cleveland. So we're looking good. Uh, lastly, uh, I mentioned to the mayor, and I'm gonna look into that, about trying to come up with a pot of money to help these seniors who have trees in their backyard that need to be cut down, we may be able to do something or not, that's a health and safety issue, if your tree falling on somebody's house, or something like that, so I, I, I thought about that the last two, three days. So, uh, I'll be getting started either through Zoom, uh, or whatever, probably within the next week or two, uh, to work on this legislation, and, and I, and I hope that I can get you all to come, so we can move forward on it, and, and, and you give me your opinion and, and, and do the best we can to, to get some legislation to stop these people flying through our city, uh, wreck us. Uh, Mr. Chairman, that concludes health and safety, thank you.
Thank you very much, Councilman Martin. Councilman Tim Austin?
This mic is always messed up.
Councilman Austin, you still, you still muted, sir, my brother, you still muted.
There you go, okay, cool. Um, the Contract and Property Committee did meet twice in the month of May. Um, we had some, some resolution, a couple ordinances that we talked about. The last ordinance we talked about was the two hundred and thirty-nine thousand dollar grant that, um, will have impact on O H M. O H M has sought out grants and other resources to really help us as a partner, and I do appreciate that. That was a offshoot of a over two million dollar grant, um, to help us with the infrastructure set up for the resurfacing of Euclid Avenue. So that was definitely a positive for O H M and a feather in our representative's cap. We also discussed the conditional use permit for a drug treatment facility on Euclid Avenue. That has been a point of contention, um, for some counselors, and I do appreciate the healthy discussion we had surrounding the treatment and training facility in our city. This is a necessity for our city, um, and the location may be of concern for some, but I believe that the policing that we've had to this point has greatly improved and kind of reducing the opportunity for some people that need treatment, to have to travel far, you know, bus fare, Uber money, all those things that have a, a, a say in how they get treatment. And I don't want anything to have, to be an impediment to our citizens getting the treatment that they need. And those were the primary, I guess, heated topics, or topics of concern for the last meeting. Uh, we continue to seek resources to improve our infrastructure prior to having the Ohio Department of Transportation resurface Euclid Avenue from end to end. I appreciate hearing about the lights that are going in, and I think, I, I mentioned in our last meeting about the overlay for utility companies, whether it's the electric company, correction, the illuminating company, the gas company, or the water company, or sewer district, that may have to dig under Euclid Avenue, you want to get those folks in here to kind of align what they need to do, uh, prior to the Ohio Department of Transportation coming in and having those contractors going and do the work under Euclid Avenue, correction, to resurface Euclid Avenue. Um, we also discussed hiring an engineer for our city, so we don't have to contract with certain other engineering firms. Working with the mayor to receive more information on contract status, so more to follow on the actual contract status. We did have a meeting, myself and the mayor, uh, and we got some, some traction, so I think there's, you know, just a matter of getting the list of the open contracts, so there'll be no true surprises later on. And, brother President, that's all I have for contracts and property for the month of May.
Thank you very much, Councilman Austin.
Amen.
Council Vice President, Madam Vice President?
Nothing at this time.
Thank you very much, I chair the Finance Committee. The next Finance Committee meeting will be, uh, Tuesday, the, the ninth, at six thirty. Tonight, we will be discussing, or voting on, ordinance number twelve dash twenty, which is the American Legal Publishing, um, that we have hired. So again, please join us at six nine, six, June ninth, twenty twenty. We'll be talk, we'll be discussing the revenue reduction, the Fiscal Commission, the monthly plan, and anything else that, uh, pertains to finances. Thank you very much. The next City Council meeting is, is two Tuesdays from now, I don't have a date, Dr. Guy, you have a date in front of you?
Um, for your, for your finance committee?
The next regular council meeting.
Oh, the next one will be on the sixteen? Sixteen.
June sixteenth?
Yes.
Please join us, June sixteenth, twenty twenty, for the next regular council meeting. Uh, I do want to say that I do tend to agree, uh, on the, on the subject of opening back up City Hall with Councilwoman Gowdy, if the, if the city is good enough to open back up, then City Hall should be open, should be good enough to open back up, uh, so we can start to help enterprising needs of the people, of course, with precautions, um, sanitary precautions and, um, six-foot precautions, but again, if the liquor stores can open, if this and that can open, in my, in my humble opinion, City Hall can open. Or if not, if, uh, we need to start putting some restrictions on some businesses. Alright, next, we have Proclamations for Sister Eleanor Forbes Shelton. Any one of my colleagues want to read the proclamation for Ms. Eleanor Forbes Shelton?
Smith, you love doing that, I'm surprised you're not doing it.
Uh, I, I can read it, I want to give my, I do want to give my colleagues an opportunity to, to read it, you know, this is a democracy.
We'd like to feel, we'd like to feel your fire, Brother Smith, we want to feel your fire, man.
Oh, give me, give me, give me one second, I, 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 I sure will pull up the email.
Uh, Councilor, can you see it on the screen, my screen?
Yes.
Uh, no, I, no, but I, I have it right here.
Okay.
I have it right here. Office of City Council, City of East Cleveland Proclamation. Whereas, whereas Eleanor Forbes Shelton was born in Cleveland, Ohio, May second, nineteen fifty-one, to the late Cleo Forbes A. Forbes and Mary Alice Johnson Forbes. And whereas Eleanor Forbes Shelton has two surviving siblings, El Fried, El Frieda Forbes Hubbard of West Hempstead, New York, and Anthony Craig Forbes of Cleveland, Ohio. Her oldest brother Clifford Forbes and brother Arthur Forbes precede her in death. And whereas Eleanor Forbes Shelton was affectionately called Bubbles by close family and friends. She attended Chesterfield Elementary School, Patrick Henry Junior High School, and Goodwill High School, in which she graduated June nineteen sixty-nine. She attended Central State University and graduated in June nineteen seventy-four with a Bachelor of Science in Education. Whereas Eleanor Forbes Shelton met and married her college sweetheart, Henry Lamar Shelton, August third, nineteen seventy-four. Within this union was born a son, Wesley Wilson Shelton. Henry was deceased on October twenty-first, nineteen ninety-two. They were married for eighteen years. Her son Wesley was Eleanor's absolute joy. She would always say that Wesley was her heartbeat. Whereas Eleanor Forbes Shelton worked and finished her Master of Education degree from John Carroll University. She continued her teaching career for the Cleveland Municipal School District. She enjoyed a thirty-five-year teaching experience and career in special education. She later retired from Lincoln West High School in June two thousand nine. She truly enjoyed her students and made them part of her family. She believed children learn well in a family environment. Whereas Eleanor Forbes Shelton leaves behind her son Wesley Shelton and loved her family and friends after her daughter with long-term illness. She will truly be. She will truly be missed, but now can rest peacefully in heaven. And now therefore, on behalf of City Council and Mayor Brandon L. King, we acknowledge the life of Eleanor Forbes Shelton and hereby express our deepest condolences to the family and friends on her passing, May tenth, twenty twenty.
Well, Counselors, the uh proclamation is on the reception desk for you all to put your signatures. Uh, this was at the request of former Councilwoman Jay Addison. Um, from what I understand, she is a resident. She was a resident of East Cleveland as well.
Thank you very much. Next, we move on. Dr. Guy, legislation, please. Next, we move on to legislation. Dr. Guy?
Can you hear me now?
Yes, ma'am.
Ordinance number twelve dash twenty, second read, and ordinance enacting and adopting second, a second supplement to the Code of Ordinances for the City of East Cleveland, provided by American Legal Publishing Corporation, uh requested by Ernest L. Smith, Council President, sponsored by Counselor's Hall.
I'd like to pass the gavel to Madam Vice President.
Counselor Smith, your name bears, you, you, this legislation bears your name. How would you like to proceed?
Thank you very much. I'd like to sponsor ordinance number twelve dash twenty and move for its adoption.
I second that motion.
Discussion?
Yes, this is the American Legal um to or has organized all of our ordinances and our our uh our green book, our our big Bible uh for us all to take a look at and share with the public and reorganize.
So uh it it's the blue book now.
The blue book now.
Get used to saying the blue book.
Not the gray book, the blue, the the blue Bible.
Okay. Any other discussion? Hearing none. Uh, Dr. Guy, would you call the role?
Counselor Austin?
Yes.
Counselor Martin?
Yes.
Counselor Stevenson?
Yes.
Counselor Gaudi?
Yes.
And Counselor Smith?
Yes, yes.
Ordinance number twelve dash twenty has passed. Next, we have ordinance number.
I will now pass the gavel back to the president.
Thank you, Madam Vice President.
Okay, next, we have ordinance number fifteen dash twenty, second read, and ordinance granting a conditional use permit pursuant to section one one two three point zero three A A A and section one one two three point zero three A for Cornerstone Project LLC to operate a place of education and a drug treatment center at fifteen, one five zero one one Euclid Avenue, Euclid, East Cleveland, Ohio, requested by the Community Development Director and sponsored by Trinity, our Austin Counselor at Large.
Councilman Austin, ordinance number fifteen dash twenty bears your name. What is your pleasure?
Council President, I'd like to sponsor ordinance number fifteen dash twenty and move for its adoption.
I second that motion.
It's been moved to second. Do we have a discussion by uh Council Austin?
Yeah, I would like to um add that this is a critical, I guess, asset or potential asset for the community. Having the opportunity to receive the treatment that some of our citizens greatly need um right here at our doorstep will be phenomenal. And I think that since this is a conditional use program, correction, for conditional use permit request, if the circumstances um become dire, we still have the um authority to um retract the permit. So need not be concerned, but this is something that I feel we need right now, and I'll I I support. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Austin. Any other, uh, my colleagues, any other comments?
Yes.
Councilwoman Gaudi?
Yes, uh, I have a comment on that. Uh, we have children that is close, like I discussed before, that's in our school district, is too close by the school district. We gonna have all kind of people coming to and for to this program, which I don't mind the program being in East Cleveland, but I do mind it to be actually close by the schools because we don't even know predators as, you know, we get all kind of people walking there and they on drugs and the safety of the children should be first.
Yes, right.
And my comment is also the schools. Sometimes the patrol, we get so many children just missing in our city already, you know? And we don't have any provide those children. And it's going to be a tragedy if we put it by the school. I was asking about, told Council Martin, I was like, why can't y'all put it by the free clinic down the street on Euclid? It's away from the schools, it's on the same strip, and they have other people like security down there, but we can't see somebody else probably see it because we need more eyes than just that. And I don't have a problem for it to be in our city. I want it to be actually away from our city. And if this is the place right here by Family Dollar, y'all already working on this place. If this is this facility that y'all trying to already has, you are already working on this place. So I do still have a problem with that because you didn't bring it to council first.
Thank you.
I I make sure I get to you, Mr. Mayor. I I I promise. Uh, Councilman Martin?
Yeah, I uh I've I've heard Corinne Stevenson, uh, and I've heard Councilwoman Gaudi. I'll say this, because I lived on Euclid Avenue for almost fifteen years, right next to Shaw uh in the elementary street around the corner. Uh, the best place for it, in my opinion, is Euclid Avenue. High visibility, people walking up and down the street all the time. Uh, police are up and down Euclid all day and all night. I used to hear them uh up and up where I was, right on the corner there. Doctor, I mean, uh, Councilwoman Gaudi mentioned in Cleveland, the free clinic, but it's actually in Cleveland, not East Cleveland. So I don't know if we would have any leverage there. We have to have treatment programs and and for my vision, and I've been, I was been a social worker for almost twenty-five years uh in Harvard Community Service Center, the Justice Center dealing with inmates, uh helping families, mothers with uh who get pregnant to get prenatal care and all like that. You want high visibility, okay? We have people, and I can tell you this from living where I'm at, all kind of people walking up and down Euclid all the time. Women of the night proposition you, okay? And we around people every day that's on drugs or whether prescription drugs or other kind of drugs, period. Drugs is a part of our society that will always be there. Us taking a step to to treat it in a place that actually is back a little bit back off Euclid, not right on Euclid Avenue. Uh, we just have to make sure our police officers uh have high patrol in that. But this is an opportunity for us to do something we haven't done in this year for a while. So I think high disability has is a plus. Uh, I have, where I lived at, the high school students coming in the back of my building, smoke joints all the time, okay? They 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 smoke joints all the time. And they would see me and 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 someone knew it was coming, I say, I ain't gonna do nothing, you guys gotta go. Okay, so the the location is solid, it's visible. The safeguards, I'm quite sure, will, I would request that the mayor make sure that our police uh have their antennas up and that kind of thing, but I would definitely be opposed to putting on some side street or something like that. So I'm in favor of it. Uh, the Cornerstone program has been presented and I think it's had a lot of potential. I think we need to move on this. So uh I'm in favor where it is right now. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Martin. Uh, Council, Council Vice President?
Okay. Let me, let me, let me start my dissertation here. Okay. Uh, because I'm full of consternation, according to Mr. Austin, with regard to this. And it's not consternation, it's that I I believe that everything has a place, and I believe that this thing is out of place. Now, I want to start, I want to go back to the beginning here because what happened was this began in twenty nineteen, which was before the time that myself and Miss Gaudi arrived into this situation. In twenty nineteen, Cornerstone purchased property located at one six one three three Euclid Avenue. Some kind of way, um, I don't know what happened up there, but the building ended up, you purchased this property for eighteen thousand dollars um in February, but but in February in twenty nineteen. In February or March of twenty of twenty twenty, this building ended up to being torn down. And I'm confused about that because there's a couple of things going on here. The building is all of a sudden torn down. The city tore the building down, which means that the city had to pay for the tearing down of the building. There was a building on the property, but when you look at the tax records, the tax records reflect that there was no building on the property for the several months that the building was still there. So that's what had, that's the beginning of this process. And as I go through um and come up, I guess what happened, I guess, here is that because this building at one six one three three Euclid Avenue was demolished by the city, then then Cornerstone had to find another location. Um, as best I can tell, and based on this other location is where all of this stuff comes into play of this this facility being by our school. I never said I was opposed to this. I never said that I wanted to put it on a side street. All I'm saying to you all is that it is not in the proper location, number one. And number two, we are in the middle of a of a visioning process that has been suspended as a result of the COVID virus nineteen. And when we reassume this process, it's very likely that this building will not even exist in the New East Cleveland. If we are going towards a New East Cleveland, because based on what I'm seeing, I'm seeing more of the same. When when I say more of the same, I I mean that I'm seeing more, this is, this is a substance abuse facility. There are several other substance abuse facilities further down Euclid already in the city of East Cleveland, and I don't see how this is going to change the dynamic of our city for the future for our children. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. Mr. Mayor?
Thank you, Council President. So I really wanted to keep it short, but the Council Vice President has really inspired me to to make a couple of statements here. So there is no substance abuse in this regard facility that is up and running in the city of East Cleveland. As Councilman Martin stated, longtime resident, Martin's been here forever, I've been here forever. Trust me, drugs have been in this city forever. We need to treat people with substance abuse problems, period, in this city. And there is no facility in this city currently providing that service. The discussion about what happened at Euclid and Noble, we can have that for another time. I would appreciate, and I think it's probably a great um, a great position to take to ask for a clarity on things instead of just assuming uh what you think may have happened or what you think didn't happen or did happen. It is, it's a, it's a better conversation and it's more fruitful if we sit out and we ask and then find out what happened to that property. But let's do that in another conversation. I agree with basically everything that Councilman Martin said about the need for that facility. Again, Representative Mike is with us, and I'd like to bring him in to answer any questions that you may have. One of the things I'm excited about, when he was here, and I mentioned the school piece, because I know personally it should go in a relative proximity to the school. But once he gets finished telling you what they have planned and the services they provide, I think you'll love this even more. The visibility, the ease of access, the offset from Euclid makes it not a threat, but it, but being on Euclid makes it easy to get to. So Council President and Counselors, uh, he's here. I'd like to bring him in to address many of your concerns.
Yes, sir. Please do. Thank you very much for for your time.
Thank uh thank you for this time, and I I can appreciate uh the concerns that Councilman uh woman Gaudi brought forward. Uh, in all of our locations, we have a relationship with each police department in in our location. So uh in Riverside, it's Riverside Police, Dayton is Dayton Police, Springfield, it's Springfield uh police departments. So we have a relationship with them. We become that center where the police, as well as members that are our clients are working in community, it becomes a place also for conversation uh between the officers and the uh the clients as well as Cornerstone staff. So it's a place where we welcome police involvement in all of our locations. It's also a place where we uh we have two companies. I'm the founder of both. So Cornerstone provides a mental health and substance abuse uh treatment for adults and adolescents. My separate company is called First Step Recovery Center. We're licensed to provide prevention, Councilwoman Gaudi, for adolescents in within the school system. So we do violence prevention, we do substance abuse prevention and education inside of the schools. So we're uh licensed by Ohio Moss, Ohio Department of Mental Health and Substance Abuse. So what we're hoping to do, we haven't approached the superintendent yet. We wanted to first come in and get squared away, and we I we received, uh, we started working on this over a year ago when we first started meeting uh with the the City Council and the mayor and his administration so that I'm set on the Committee for Minority Health uh for the state of Ohio, which uh we're supposed to be increasing access for minorities and Latinos in the dispense to receive mental health and substance abuse as well as workforce development. So what they, what they agreed to do, I said, I told Governor DeWine, I said, if City of East Cleveland is the poorest in the state of Ohio, you're always talking about how the state of Ohio has this robust economy. I said, that's not what's being reflected in the city of East Cleveland. I said, so tell J P, we're gonna need at least a half a million dollars upfront to hire the best people that live in the city of East Cleveland, their staff, as well as contracting with the city police department to make sure that that area stays clear. There's no, not gonna be any loitering outside. There's not gonna be any crowds. I said, and so our adult business is done at five. What we do from five to eight o'clock is to open it up to for kids. Kids who are having struggles with uh uh mental health, uh uh single-parent moms who are struggling with raising their kids, uh issues that they want to do as far as family reunification. Uh, we're also going to be working with uh domestic violence, but the survivors of domestic violence in the evening so that they have a place where they can come and begin to address those family issues. So we just don't service the adults, but we service the parents, especially the single-parent mothers as well, because we have a gender-specific program just for them. So uh we hope that by uh contracting with the city police department to provide security, because I think that gives everyone, um, city council and administration, especially the citizens, hey, it's safe here. You know, so we we want to be able to come and open up and have that discussion uh uh with city council, with the police department, to see how our contract would look, to say, okay, look, we want this to be a safe place for everybody. You know, but we do a lot, we do work within the school systems. And, uh, we just want to be, uh, upheld, uh, to the city, uh, to the people that live here, to city council, follow your rules, your regulations. But we, we made a promise to purchase services that are going to give us great outcome. And what I mean by that, we can go to Family Dollar and get a broom and then we get upset if it breaks in two or three days. Well, they giving us enough money to hire the best and the brightest of East Cleveland to provide these services. So, uh, the mayor asked me earlier, well, how are you going to do the marketing? Well, we got to get somebody recommended by city council that can do the marketing. We don't pretend to know the city of East Cleveland. So we want to work directly with city council, the mayor's administration to make, we know we're only going to get it one shot at this, Councilman Austin. And we want to make sure we get it right the very first time, because we want to be here. You know, we don't mean to, no harm. We're one of the few African American companies in a position of that, uh, stretch from Middletown, Ohio, uh, all the, to, uh, to Columbus and then here. I will be the point person here. So I'm going to be the guy on the ground, uh, making sure and making myself accountable to city council, to the mayor and his administration, uh, uh, to make sure that we get it right. But we don't mean to cause no problems. You know, we want to do a great job and, uh, be a part of this community. Earn, earn, and earn your respect and your trust.
Mike, that, that was great. I'm not, I'm not sure. I didn't mean to cut you off. I did want you to spend some time talking about the finances, the money and the jobs. In regards to this, please.
So, uh, in, in that, uh, piece, uh, when we talked to the state, they, they give us the, Ohio Moss gave us a minority mental health grant that also includes workforce development. Uh, for, uh, the clients that we bring in the door, we're responsible for the workforce development, getting them employment opportunities, finding other community partners. Though, like, community partners in Springfield, we have Dole. We have Dole, uh, manufacturing processing the pineapple, but salad. Then we have Smith, we have, uh, Sugar Creek, which is a meat processing plant. So we have over a hundred of our clients who are employed. So the client stays, uh, in our sober living housing, rent free, no utilities. Their job is to get treatment, become stable. We then do the workforce development. Now you go to work and save every dollar that you have. So that by the time you finish our program, you have your first month's rent and deposit. You probably, your credit score has improved because it's mandatory that you do the financial literacy. So we'll have to go out and find community partners, companies that are willing to hire our clients that are coming through. So Target is a partner. Walmart is a partner. Uh, First, uh, First Diversity, which is a temp agency, just did a job fair for two hundred of our clients. And, 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 and got Dole to agree to hire fifty of them. So we want to create the same nucleus here to find, uh, community partners, whether it's Target, Walmart, manufacturers. We even have some of our clients that work on a farm. Or some of them were raised up on farms, whether it's here in Southern Ohio, whether it's in Mississippi or Georgia. But we try to make an opportunity for them to be returning citizens. We also work directly with the Department of Corrections. So with the Department of Corrections, the high recidivism rate, the, the young man or woman comes out that's on some form of mental health medication. It takes nine months to get to see a psychiatrist and get your meds renewed. We do it in seventy-two hours. Chi-Hope County is considered a mental health desert. And that's why you have such a high recidivism rate for African Americans returning back to prison, because they can't get access to the mental health treatment or access to the, uh, mental health, uh, medication being prescribed. So our psychiatrists do all of that. You know, we will be utilized telehealth, telemedicine, so that our psychiatrists, whether they're in Columbus or whether they're in Dayton, can be at, be providing services right here in the city of East Cleveland, uh, through doxy dot me, which is our telehealth portal, because that's the one that meets the HIPAA standards. So that we can be, uh, able to provide mental health services to our community, which is African Americans for the most part. Uh, and, and be sensitive to those cultural needs for the most part, but do real services. You know, because at the core of who we are, we are an agency that's founded by our community, for our community. And it is about our people of color receiving more access to mental health. Not only that, but the substance abuse workforce development and employment opportunities. So in that grant, it also includes that we work with city council and the mayor's administration to look at properties that you may have in the land bank. That we develop and rehab those properties, not for ourselves, but for the men and women that come through the door who are homeless and don't have a place to go after they leave sober living. Okay, this becomes your transitional house. When we did our research and went to the, uh, the shelter over on Lakeside, they have almost four, they have a little over four hundred people that live there, right? Over two hundred and fifty are from the city of East Cleveland. So what we want to, they, some, at some point in time, there's no mental health treatment going on there. There's no substance abuse treatment going on there. We have to be responsible, we as courts will have to be responsible to the cap city council and to the mayor and to the city. Hey, we need excellent A1 treatment to get better. And that's what we're here to provide.
Mike, thank you for that. Just like to add, all of those people that come through the court are, have a dollar amount attached to them. And when they are designated to go to a facility outside of the city, the city then loses that dollar. We need to circulate and keep as much money in the city as we can.
Absolutely.
So that, that concludes what we had, Council President. Thank you for allowing that.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much, Mr. Mike. Uh, what's your last name, my brother, Mr. Mike?
Ward, W A R D.
W A R, oh, Mr. Ward. Thank you, Mr. Ward, very much.
Thank you for the time.
Yes, sir. Um.
I got a question.
Madam Vice President?
This is not the first conditional use permit that you all have applied for. You all applied for an, uh, per, personal, a use permit for the Enlightenment Center in the Plaza. And we didn't receive, we didn't see any action as a result of that. Can you address that?
Enlightenment Center?
So, so Mike can't address that. I can. There was another company that came in and, and it wasn't Cornerstone. So, so let me say this. Just like with the housing crisis, they had that big class action and a ton of money was put in the places to address the housing crisis and the loss of properties vacant and abandoned. The city saw none of that, right? Because we weren't prepared. When the class action got set up for the opioid crisis, we have, uh, a lawsuit in. So we're in on the class action. When they start releasing money for that, we can't capitalize on it if we don't have a facility here. So once they announced that, that's when the other company came in. Because now people are trying to capitalize on that money that's come in because they know the services are going to be needed here in the city of East Cleveland. So that, that's not this company. That's another company. And they're not up and running.
I know that. And, and my other, my concern basically is if, if you need the, the situation here in the city of East Cleveland, that's one thing. But to put it by the school is totally something else. I'm not going to agree with that. I'm not going to vote to agree with to put it in this location and we can move forward.
Can I say something?
Councilwoman Gowdy, we're going to call for the vote. Councilwoman Gowdy?
Okay, um, I was, um, concerned about how was he going to divide the hours? Because after certain hours, kids need to be at home getting prepared for school and all this. We know everybody was on drugs one way or the other. But our city already flooded with bars, flooded with the stores that selling alcohol. I mean, what change is we going to make for our city? Even if you're trying to clean these people up and they are mental and on medication, what happens when they don't take their medication and flip out on anybody? You know, the police should not be involved with this because they have mental problems too. They shouldn't. They need counseling too. They can't even handle, uh, anything. They putting knees on people, nets, killing them, you know? So they need treatments too. And they need to take a drug test, you know? But they do. When's the last time they took a drug test? And another thing, I feel like if we had it before, why didn't you mention it? Before that we had, and it was a relax of, of us getting money back into the system? You know, we'd be the last one to find out everything. But you want us to vote on everything? I can't vote on it because the same mistake that y'all made with the recycle down there, I'm not going to revisit that. And our children, it's very important in having all these people coming in here that y'all, a lot of these people is getting drugs, one of the people that's supposed to be in leadership, you know? So you know we have a problem already. So I don't want a disaster to keep happening over and over again. I'm not.
Thank you.
Dr. Guy, call one of those, please.
Councilor Austin?
Yay!
Councilor Martin?
Yay!
Council Stevenson?
Nay.
Council Gowdy?
Nay.
Council Smith?
Yay!
What? What did you say, Smith?
I said yay.
Okay, so the, uh, ordinance seventeen dash twenty passed.
Thank you.
Well, we will be protesting that.
That's right. We're going to protest, Ms. Gowdy.
And not only that, we're going to get signatures, because we don't want it here.
I hope y'all don't come on my street looking for a signature, because the people on my street want it. And I live on that street.
But you always say something that ain't even true.
That's true.
Not even true.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
The ordinance number seventeen dash twenty, Dr. Guy, please.
Ordinance number seventeen dash twenty is a second read and ordinance amending chapter three fifty-six of the codified ordinance of the city of East Cleveland to change reserved parking for city council use from five parking spaces along the north retaining wall of the western portion of the city hall to the eastern portion to two spaces along the north retaining wall of the eastern portion and three spaces along the north retaining wall of the western portion of city hall. Requested by Corinne C. Stevenson, Council Vice President, and sponsored by Corinne C. Stevenson, Council Vice President.
Council Vice President, ordinance number seventeen dash twenty bears your name. What, what is your pleasure?
My, my, this ordinance bears my name and I move for its adoption so that we can all be safe as we travel to and from, uh, our destination at city hall.
I, I, I second the, uh, the ordinance seventeen twenty sponsored by, uh, Council Vice President Corinne Stevenson.
Thank you very much. Dr. Guy, call up, vote please.
Hey, Councilor.
Any, any discussion, I apologize.
I, I got one question, because I've been bringing it up the last three weeks and that's, do we have our clerk, Kajija Guy, she covered? I'm not concerned, I'm, I'm not concerned about Austin so much or Smith and the man, but the ladies. Do we have her covered? Does she have a safe parking spot? Because she's here more than anybody. That's my question to, to the Council President on, uh, or Corinne, or Corinne Stevenson on this legislation. Do we have our clerk covered?
According to what I understand, uh, the president has offered his parking space to the clerks when she's available.
So are you all right with that, Kajija Guy?
Councilor Martin, normally I park in the front of the building during the day. And then in the evening, uh, I will not be parking by the end of the road over there. So whatever parking space is available, like I've been doing over the last four years near the, near the door, that's what I'll do.
Okay, now, I'm trying to picture this, because I'm, I'm forward. Where are these parking spaces for, for Corinne and Gowdy? Where are they at now? I'm looking, I, I, I know we got council places we have for years. So is it near the, where the mayor parks? Where, where are these spaces at? Where are they?
Okay, so.
Next, go ahead, Mayor.
If everyone can picture where the current council loc, spots are. They're along that fence on the exit way out of the parking lot. So you got five there. We're going to leave three there. And we're going to move two along that fence all the way to the last two locations. The, the very first, the closest one will be for the law director. And then the next two will be for council. Council President and Council Vice President. Right? So you got law director, council president, council vice president, and then the mayor's EEA.
Okay, is that okay with the ladies?
That math don't work out for all three of them, though.
Well.
So you still have your three, you still have three on the other end. I'm just moving two.
And that's, that's Corinne Stevenson and Anita Gowdy, correct?
No.
Who?
President and Vice President.
Yes. Who?
President and Vice President.
Wait, the president is, Ernest said he didn't need a spot that close.
So where, where to think, where to think, where to think outside of, of who individually sits in those seats and think about the seat itself. So president, vice president, instead of person, right? And, and, and the president was gracious enough to tell Dr. Guy during business hours, she could park there.
So, so the president is Ernest Smith. And the vice president is Corinne Stevenson. But, but Ernest said he don't really need the spot. We've talked about this three, four times.
Counsel's control of the environment.
So, uh, my thing is, I, I'm trying to look out for the women. You know, this was an issue for me over the years, but now I can walk down here. So I, I'm not pressed for a spot. But I want to make sure that the, the ladies, because that's why I brought up Kajija Guy, Anita Gowdy, Corinne Stevenson. Uh, and even Ernest has been kind enough to say it ain't a big deal for him to have a spot. So, I mean, not a spot as close to city, to, uh, the building.
Let me try to articulate it. Let me try to articulate it for, for everyone.
Thank you.
So, um, Mr. Mayor is saying, so don't, don't think about the person. Yes, I, um, graciously gave my spot up when, when needed. But don't think about the person. The next president might be a female or might be a guy who says, I want that spot. Where it might be, the next president might be a female. So just think about the seat, not the, um, actual person. And yes, Councilwoman Gowdy can pull in the president's spot. But I won't be the president forever. Uh, none of us will have these positions for, forever. So that is the spot of the president. And the, um, at, the present day president says that Councilwoman Gowdy is more than, uh, welcome to park in, in, in their spot anytime she feels.
Okay, I'm not, I'm. Go ahead.
You understand?
Yeah, I understand now. I'm not going to belabor the point. The other thing is, I want to make sure that the administration puts that, those orange cones, orange, whatever you call them things, so that you, people, they don't have to go to the hassle we've had over the years, people parking in the spots, okay? Enforcement is the key to all of this, no matter what. So the mayor said they're going to enforce it. If I'm ready to vote, let's move on, okay?
Thank you very much. Dr. Guy, please.
Hey, Councilor Austin?
Yay!
Councilor Martin?
Yay!
Council Stevenson?
Yay.
Council Gowdy?
Yay.
And Council Smith?
Yay.
Okay, ordinance number seventeen dash twenty has passed.
Thank you very much. Next.
Okay, lastly is ordinance number nineteen dash twenty is a first read and ordinance authorized the mayor to enter into. Two hundred thirty-nine thousand six hundred and thirty dollars with OHM advisor of six zero 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 one, I'm sorry, six zero zero one, Euclid Avenue, Suite one thirty, Cleveland, Ohio, four four one zero three, for the. Cleveland, Ohio, four four one zero three, for the purpose of developing scope and cost proposal for the engineering design bidding award and construction administration services for the installation of seven thousand seven hundred and ninety-five linear feet of water line in sections determined to be in poor condition under Euclid Avenue, West Bell War to Hastings, Superior to Forest Hill, Lee to Grasmer, and Sheldon to Hastings, pursuant to the Cleveland Division of Water Suburban Water Main Renewal Program for the Euclid Avenue Water Line Replacement Project. Requested by the mayor and sponsored by Timothy R. Austin, Councilor-at-Large, Ernest L. Smith, Council President, Nathaniel Martin, Councilor-at-Large, and Juanita Gowdy, Ward Two.
Thank you very much, our great, great clerk, Dr. Guy. Uh, Councilor Austin, any first read discussion on this?
Um, yeah, just as a, a caveat, just saying that this is an opportunity for us to get the infrastructure under Euclid Avenue prepared for the resurfacing that's gonna take place within the next couple of years. It's a great thing, phenomenal effort on behalf of OHM to seek out the resource to do so. I support, I support, I support. That's all I have, Council President.
Thank you very much.
Uh, Mr. Smith, I'd like to, uh, jump in real briefly.
Yes, Councilor.
Just to make sure we follow the process procedure, and I know Corinne commented at the last time we met. Uh, what's her name, Keisha Chambers? Okay, can she, uh, Gowdy have some questions? And I just want to make sure we follow the process, the right process procedure when you go off a bid. So can we have her chime in, uh, Council President Ernest Smith?
Absolutely, absolutely, sir.
Yes, I'm here.
All right, go ahead, Keisha.
I'm here, what's the question, please?
Oh, the question is, uh, how many, um, people that you, uh, interviewed for bids? Before it came down to?
At that point.
It hasn't gotten to that.
I can't hear you.
That's, uh, well, that's not.
Well, please don't interrupt me.
Uh, Keisha, explain how the process worked. Did you hear me, Keisha?
I, I do hear you. When we go out to bid for construction, uh, we will be seeking bids. We, we will put it out for a, for a bid to the public. So we can get as many bids from different construction companies as we can, and to get the best price for the construction work.
Well, that's my concern, just as long as we follow the proper process. Uh, we appreciate OHM and what you guys have been doing, and your patience, just as long as all government is predicated on process and procedure. Thank you.
Absolutely.
And, uh, this is something that we don't have to pay back, right?
That's correct.
Okay.
That's it?
That's it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you!
Thank you very much, um, to my colleagues, and thank you very, very much to Miss Johnson. We move on to remark, remarks and. Marks and requests of the public. We really, uh, thank you for joining us in these, um, hard, dark times, the, uh, Zoom. Uh, so we see, I see a few of our great residents online, so now is the time. If you have any remarks and requests, three minutes, please.
I guess I'll go first, Justin Anderson. Hold on just a second, uh, Ms. Gowdy and Nate, can y'all be quiet in that room, please? Okay, so I want to first start by, uh, Justin Anderson, one four four three six Terrace Road. I want to start, first start with the cornerstone project. Um, sometimes we get excited about jobs and economic development and growth for our city. We seem to forget some very important things and, and go through things with a fine tooth of comb. I want to commend Corinne, Vice President Corinne Stevenson for doing her due diligence, and it seems like she's been researching tons of things. And I'm glad that she and, uh, Councilwoman Juanita Gowdy aren't like kids at a candy store and hear free candy and say, okay, I'm gonna get in this car. So what was very disturbing to me, that seems like no one cared about, is that she said that they paid eighteen thousand dollars for a building, and then the city tore it down. And then we'll discuss it at a later date. Why, what's so hard to tell us, why did the city tear down a building that someone else had just paid for? Another thing that I know Corinne as being a credible source, an incredible person. She said there was a permit pulled to go into Forest Hill Shopping Center, and then there was some mumbo jumbo about, oh, it wasn't that, and this and that. Well, there was a permit pulled, and we want to know why, and, and we stopped him from saying, and he even said he didn't pull no permit, I could see his reactions. And then someone said, oh, whatever he explained. So those were the main issues to where, just off of those pieces of evidence, I would have held the project up until those things were answered. If you remember during the Anoar thing with the water and all that stuff, Mildred Brewer testified that you need to get transcripts of things. You need to get, research these contractors that we have, instead of just voting on stuff. Mildred Brewer said that she was taken up to a fancy restaurant, and that kind of persuaded her voted. Nate remembers that.
I remember.
Vote on these contracts.
You gotta show the trouble.
You can't be blindfolded by, ooh, we're gonna have a couple extra jobs. You gotta find out what's really going on. I want to talk a little bit about the contracts and property, Mr. Daryl Moore. Now, it's under contracts and property, and it has been proven that to tear down a house is not that expensive, maybe six to ten thousand dollars. Daryl Moore, who is a friend of the administrations and people there, we paid eighteen thousand, thirty-six thousand, twelve thousand, prices like that. And that's very disturbing that it wasn't out to, to bid. And, and we seem to think that, oh, as long as it's under fifty each payment, that he doesn't have to go off a bid. But no, if you pay him over fifty total, that should have went out for bid. And, and I would advise you all to look at the FBI transcript where Daryl Moore was involved in, and convicted, and told on every damn body, and, 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 and you all need to start paying attention to stuff like that. Why are we paying all this money to a convicted, uh, felon, who's been already involved with the feds? In two thousand and six, when he had a fake insurance, and, and all these fake companies? Who wants the transcript? You all need to start doing, you all need to start doing your due diligence. Oh, sorry, Mel Ryan Leach was also listed in it when he told on everybody. But you all need to start doing your due diligence and checking out these people. Yes, that guy may have a legit company, it may be great, but guess what? We need to do very deep research, and Corinne Stevenson brought up some very good points today, and it seems that they were ignored, because if it was me, I would have said, oh, hold on, we're gonna investigate this. We need to find out what's really going on, and why we tore down the building and that things. And lastly, I'll say, and thank you all for allowing me a few extra seconds, but lastly, I'll say, we held a protest yesterday. It was advertised by, I don't know who, that it would have been a riot and very disturbing protest, that people were gonna tear up city hall. Me and Councilwoman Gowdy were leading the way of that protest, and nothing we do is violent. I'm one of the most peaceful people known to mankind, and we did have a peaceful protest. It was pretty good. Now, thank you all for allowing me to speak.
Council President, Mr. Smith, Council President, we have, I want you to know that, uh, Otis Mays is here, and he wants to speak when you can get him in, he's here.
I, I was wondering, uh, when he was gonna find his way.
Oh, you know he found his way, he's here.
Well, it's just so happened that, that we are at, um, that we are at that stage in the meeting, so Mr. Mays?
Wait, 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 whoa, 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 uh-uh. I've been here long enough, I got something to say, so I can get out.
Let me conduct this, because I've been asked for, um, hold, just hold on, let me, let me, let me, let me get my mind. Uh, Mr. Mays, if you don't mind, Calvin Herbie.
Good evening, Council, I'm on Neela Wood, and these lots look terrible. I'm gonna roll around so everybody see these lots. These are the lot, not cut. High as the fence, high as a house. Need them taken care of ASAP. I got babies over here, y'all seen me bouncing around. Look at, look at it. Look at it. And this is just half of the street, makes no sense. From nineteen ninety-three Neela Wood, from one end to the other. These lots have not been taken care of. You see the difference? Second thing I want to talk about, it took almost from beginning of meeting to eighteen minutes later to log into Zoom. Yes, we do need to open up city hall. Uh, this is, this is a bad, bad, bad situation that y'all putting us in. Y'all don't think about our children. And if you did, something about gas stations, selling black amounts to kids, fabricating, uh, marijuana, and some of this drug action in East Cleveland would stop. And since you are the Director of Safety, Councilman Martin, it is your job. I hold you responsible for it. Day-to-day operations, Mr. Mayor, this is your responsibility. Don't wait till election time to try and clean up our city, and I'm gone, thank you.
Thank you very much, uh, Mr. Herbie, we appreciate you. Mr. Mr. Mays?
Thank you. So, let me, let me cut in, I am very much against this, I will allow it to happen today. But I am very much against it, not necessarily for my safety, but for his safety. Seniors are most at risk. We have been out and around each other, right? You bring a senior in, we make him sick, he gets sick, his immune system is not there. I am very much against this, I'm gonna allow it to happen, next time, I won't. So, I'm just letting, I'm just letting everybody know now.
Uh, number one, and let me just deal with that, this is council meeting, and the mayor does not control your meeting. So he does. He does not control your meeting.
Can you hear, Omaze, some everybody?
We can hear.
Okay, thank you. This is your meeting, and, and I have a mask on. I didn't come here, uh, without a mask, I have a face mask on. So now, if you want to get technical about it, you'll pass some laws, making laws that we are not cognizant of. That's a blatant violation, but that's not what I'm gonna address. I'm gonna address the issue in reference to the school and this, uh, uh, rehab center, that, uh, drug center that they're planning on putting in the little shopping area down there, close to Shaw High School. The board, school board is adamant opposed to it. There is a building on Hayton Avenue, where a drug center was, was before. We have drugs in the city, it's nothing new, but it's from, away from around schools. Where that drug store was, that is empty. That's an ideal place for it, it's on the main thoroughfare, uh, Hayton Avenue. That is a place, I agree with, uh, Vice President Stevenson and, uh, Council Ga, uh, Gowdy in reference, we have to be cognizant of our children, whom is our future for tomorrow. Exposing them, and they have to pass this place, and those people, everybody, everybody know how people are on drugs, and what have you, and the, the board is adamant opposed to it. It is incumbent upon this council and administration to have brought them into the equation, to see what their concerns were in reference to, uh, passing this. So, all money is not good money.
That's right.
As, uh, um, Stevenson has said in reference, and, and I go along with what, uh, Justin Anderson said a minute ago. I was sitting on council, all council was involved in contracts, that's what sent some of them to jail. And not only during that time, even before my time, it was contracts that sent them to jail. And I can name them, and what have you. So I was the only council that was sitting at that time, was not involved in anything. And it, it, the record reflects that. And so I am saying now, please, and now what the mayor said, I can't go. All of your service at the behest of us, and all laws that you pass, the citizen must know about. So, so don't, don't get too on your high horses, because we can bring you down. So I just want to say that, and that's why I'm here tonight, to speak in reference to how the school board, uh, uh, view of this. And I'm sure the, uh, the CEO, uh, concurred with the board as well.
See you Sunday.
All right.
So there is a place.
That's your time, Mr. Mays, thank you.
They tell nobody else that's been kind. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Councilman. I may throw a caution, Mr. Mays.
Thank you, thank you.
Next, we have response of, um, response from the mayor and council of the public. Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Council President. I, I'd like to state it again, because I, I didn't mean for it to come off, uh, kind of harsh or negative. But during this pandemic, we don't know what the COVID thing is, right? That is for our safety as well as his safety, and anyone else who comes in the city hall. So I wasn't trying to be mean or anything, it's, it's for safety purposes. And we all know that seniors are the most vulnerable, right? You did bring up a good point, which leads into my next point, this is council's meeting, right? This is council's meeting. I've been saying it for, what, we have seven months now, or seven weeks now? City Hall is closed, there's a very restricted access. However, as I stated before, council can have meetings, right? City Hall is closed, but council can have meetings. As many of you know, the court still operates. I don't control the court, I don't control council, right? I control the building and the parking lot and all that, but I don't control you. So it's your meeting, if you want to have a meeting in the council chambers, the courtroom, you can. I would ask that you do it in there, but still have the Zoom capability so that I can sit up here and zoom into your meetings, right? That, that's all I would, I would ask in that regard. I thank you again for passing that legislation, bringing in new jobs. And Councilman Tim Austin was right on a conditional use permit. This thing goes south on us, if it goes haywire, we can revisit it, if we need to pull it, we can do just that. But to hold it back, to say, no, 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 all you do is go back to that old council way of doing business. And we all remember that, nothing progressed. We could not move the city forward. The city got nothing accomplished, because all they kept doing, no to this, no to that, oh, we need more information on this. We need, let the experts, let the experts educate you on these things. And sometimes we have to go with the experts' recommendations, right? So again, I appreciate you guys passing that. Thank everybody who's on, and everyone who will see this. Again, next Tuesday, we're doing the food hash, you please call six eight one two two one one, get on that list. Also asked to be on the list for the town hall at the end of the month. Please, uh, stay tuned for COVID testing, we'll be doing that in a couple of weeks. Unless there are any questions or concerns of me, Council President, that concludes my report.
Thank you very much, Councilman Gowdy?
Yeah, uh, comment on, uh, with the mayor just saying no on everything. It's not so much of no, it's being cautious, because we do have children in our neighborhood about the drug center that they want to place right in East Cleveland, close by the school. I'm gonna always be afraid for our children. We already got banded buildings around our neighborhoods, the streets is so messed up. Any, anybody can have a flat tire, and it can be the, uh, child molester. It could be anybody walking through our city right now. The drugs, we already have enough, we have so many bars in our city, so many gas stations in our city, selling alcohol and drugs. We got so, a liquor store, three liquor stores in our city, you know, and cigarettes, and they're giving it to our children, you know? So going to school, being high, and, and our police officer don't. So going to school, being high, and our police officer don't need to tame nobody. Yesterday, we had a peaceful protest, a really pretty peaceful. But we get a phone call saying that we're gonna tear up. They were strapped down like we was getting ready to go war, you know? And this did not make no sense, because when I walked up and I seen all the weapons and stuff on there, even if it was tear gas or whatever they had, it didn't look right. It didn't sit right. We had a state patrol cars instead of them patrolling the highway. They patrolled us. Why couldn't the sheriffs come in? You know? We have to start doing things decent and in order, and this is the kind of mindset that we are leading our children to clear. And far as City Hall being open, if it can be open for the courts getting money from the people, it can be open to our citizens who want to come in. We don't have that many people coming to our council meetings anyway. We don't even have people hardly coming to our youth review meeting. So we need the TV back downstairs on, so if they choose not to come in, that's fine. If they want to stay at home and watch it on cable or wherever they've been watching it, being comfortable in their home, let them do so. But the mayor should not be running the show, because the no, no, no run the dump here. If you would have said no, 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 Mr. Mayor, while you was on council, the dump would not be here. If Martin would have said no, 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 the dump would not be here. So we keep making the same mistakes over and over and over again. We gonna get the same results. I was not for it. I'm still not going to be for it, and you can't convince me to be for it, because drugs is everywhere in our city.
Thank you, Councilwoman Gaudy. Councilman Nate Daniel Martin?
Yeah, my concern is pedophiles, people that snatch kids and they end up in another country and all that. Drugs will always be with us. We do the best we can. We all have a responsibility to look out for all the kids the best we can. Visibility is key. Euclid is our main thoroughfare. If we have to, if it poses a major problem, we could look at the option that O'May came up on Hayton. I mean, if it comes down to that. But I think it would be on higher alert once this place opens to check that out, and that's all of us. What's come out in this discussion that we need to deal with? And I'll put that out to all the council people, is we have a homelessness problem. Came up in a dialogue that down at the on Lakeside there where their house, I worked there for a little while, okay? They take child down there. I don't even know how to deal with the COVID situation down there, because it was very crowded down there. Jane Sheek volunteers down there at times. So we need to, in the near future, come up with a facility for homelessness. If we got two hundred and fifty people from East Cleveland in a homeless shelter, we need to deal with that. Nobody's perfect. Nobody has all the answers, but we have to work these, work through these things. So I appreciate the comments of Justin Anderson and O'May and Gaudy and Stevenson and all like that. So let's see if we can find some common ground. Maybe we'll come up with another alternative. But for now, we got the thing in motion, okay? It is a plus. It is a plus. The other thing that I need to share is that we need to fill out the census. We need to do that to get more money in this city. We need to do that, and we need to vote after all this is over with. All the protesting and marching, you know, after the last thirty, forty years. It boils down to us being responsible by voting, the right people in, right people out, voting period, and we don't do it like we should. That's another thing. I hear people saying, I'm not gonna fill out the census. That's crazy. That is crazy. We have the most unique city in Ohio, East Cleveland, ninety-five percent African American. We have to come together. We're not gonna agree on everything and find common ground. Find common ground on this treatment place, okay? We got time to do that. Vote. Talk to your neighbors about getting out. Create community. That is what's been missing for the last fifteen years. We don't talk to each other. We don't have the street clubs meeting like they should. We don't trust each other, going all the way back to slavery. We got to get there, Ernest, man. We got to get there, Corrine Stevenson. We got to love each other. Got to keep talking about the beloved community. We're not creating. I spoke it. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Councilman Martin.
Greetings, everyone. You know, oftentimes, we forget to reflect on the things that we can actually have an impact or influence on. Respectfully to everyone's higher power, if you will. I do want to thank God for the things that we didn't have to go through. When I seen some of the other cities and how they were, you know, respectfully burned to the ground, and a lot of the protesters, they got out of control and lost lost sight of what the protest was about, making it better for, you know, our children and for other black people. As a reminder, a few East Cleveland businesses were either vandalized or broken into on some scale, whether the doors, the glass in the doors were broken or what have you. So the protests, in some instances, they, I think some of the protesters lost focus. Please take care of each other. Think before you speak. Think before you act. There has been some very good dialogue amongst the council in this meeting. And I ask that we all take a look and see where we can bridge a gap and encourage those that have an exceptional issue with the way things are now to start writing out the plan. If you were respectfully king for a day, how would you like it? What changes need to be made through legislation at the local level, at the state level, federal level? This is the focus that we as people need to start getting a hold of and actually taking action on. Because just to talk about it and to walk is great. However, in order to change the laws and practices and procedures that are in place right now, we have to make it official, and to do so in writing is key. And that's what I charge our people to do, kind of go out and take a look at it and take a moment to yourself and start writing down how you would like it to be and give that information that somebody can do something about it. Even at the local level, one of us counselors can start, you know, changing some of our legislation and making it so that if there's a problem, we kind of get it one time resolved. If you do this, you're automatically fired. Obviously, they talked about due process. We'll work that piece out too. But playtime is over, but we have to do it the right way, you know, writing, changing the laws. Thank you, brother president. That's all I have.
Council President?
Turn it over to the Vice President.
Council Vice President, thank you. That's all I have.
Okay.
Thank you, Councilman Austin. Matter of fact, President?
Yeah, I have, I have a lot to say, I guess, today. I'd like to start out, though, by saying that I will attend council meetings, but according to the state, the COVID virus isolation has been extended to July first.
Yes.
When last I checked, East Cleveland's numbers had gone up. We started out with twenty patients that had the virus. Last week, we were up to a hundred. Like I told you before, I won't be there. You know, everybody's got to do what they've got to do, but I'm not coming into that courtroom, because that courtroom is not clean on a regular basis. So I know it's not clean now. So that's my situation with that. As far as this substance abuse place, Mr. Mayor, I believe I asked for information when that guy was here the other week. And the information that I got was just information about what their project does. I don't really need an education on what their project does, because I understand the dichotomy of the drug. What I needed was the background information that I had to seek out for myself, and that's when this eighteen thousand dollars popped up, and I'm like, well, what's really going on here? This is our forum to come and get information and find out what is going on. So when I get here, I ask the questions, and they're gonna be hard questions on a lot of occasions. I ask the questions that I need to ask to be efficient in my soul and efficient in my vote and efficient in the things that I do for the city and the residents of the city. So that's why, if there's questions, I'm going to ask them. I'm not trying to hurt nobody's feelings or any of that. I just have questions, and I want them answered. And it's his building. Why can't he answer the question? And that's pretty much all I have in that regard. I would like to also know what the start date is for this particular project. And he made reference to employing fifty people from East Cleveland. I want to see that, because I know, and I've studied chemical dependency, and I know what the requirements are for chemical dependency. So I want to see him feel this situation from the city of East Cleveland. And in addition to this, we're talking about substance abuse, and I think that there may be a little confusion here. People don't think that alcohol is a substance, but alcohol fits into the same category as marijuana and the rest of the substances that people abuse in the United States of America. With that said, there's several, and I know people personally who are currently in alcohol treatment programs in a couple of those mansions down on Euclid. So we do have substance abuse treatment in this city. It may not be specified to the same treatment that they're going to do here at Cornerstone, but there is treatment going on in this city. I think that's all I have.
Thank you very much, Council Vice President. I want to really thank my colleagues, my great clerk, Bobby Guy, cameraman Drew, Mr. Mayor, everyone in the administration, Madam Law Director, Mr. Finance Director. But most importantly, I really want to thank those of you who took your time out to join us on this very unique situation. You know, I know that this is not the ideal situation, but without this, we wouldn't be having a council meeting at all, and we wouldn't be able to move the business of the city forward. I, as the quote unquote president, refused to do that. So we found a way to have the meeting, our council meetings, so we can move, so we can do just that, move our business of the city forward. I just jot it down, a few quick notes. But before I get to those notes, I do want to say this, that debate is is good, is great, and just because we don't agree does not mean we didn't do our due diligence. You know, I'm kind of, but I know the I know the reasons behind some of those comments, but just because, I'm gonna say it again, just because we don't agree on certain subjects does not mean we did not do our due diligence. I want everyone to understand that we are in a unique situation here in the city of East Cleveland. Whether we agree or disagree, I want everyone to understand that everyone has a right in these seats to be cautious. Everyone has the right to ask questions. I don't care if it's one question or a million questions. We're not all gonna agree, but we have the right to go into this with a clear mind, ask as many questions as we want to without each other getting frustrated at the next. Pedophiles, bars, alcohol, reefers, drugs, liquor stores, pedophiles, homelessness, hungreeness. Can we get a little positivity in the scene? I live on the corner of Strathmore. Talk about due diligence. I knock on every one of my neighbor's doors. I've been in East Cleveland all my life. You know, you talk about if it's on Hayton or anywhere. It would be in the close proximity to a school anywhere, and it's lived three miles.
It would. It would.
I see these prostitutes walking around here every day. Oh, it's okay for the, it's okay for the school kids to walk past them. It's okay for the school kids to, can you mute if you're gonna talk, please? It's okay for the school children to walk past all this garbage on the corner of these streets. And to be honest, it's not like Shaw High School with a quick hot skip and a jump away from the Cornerstone project. It's actually down the street some. To be honest, if it would have went on the bottom of Noble, it'd be closer to Apex than it would be to Shaw. Although I understand all concerns, and I'm not against any of you stating your concerns. Matter of fact, I encourage you. But we have the ability to hold the Cornerstone accountable. We heard and we took notes and we took it to the heart and soul about what the mayor said he was gonna do. If he does not do that, we can easily take his permit. If he does do what he says, I believe it'd be a great benefit to the city, as most of you know, I, as more as anyone around here, have been out here trying to help these shelters abuse. Hopefully, with the back of this Cornerstone right here on the corner of around the area of where they be at, of where they Can you hear me? Hopefully this will help. Thank you. Hopefully this will help. Oh, just, 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 I got it this down, so I have to say this. As a, I'm speaking as a citizen of East Cleveland, I want to say again that this mayor has been doing a far better job than the last mayor. I just, I wanted to say that because I jotted down my notes. I heard Mr. Mayor say about how the last council mayor, the council always voted no against the other mayor, but that's because the other mayor was a scumbag. So I wanted to say that, and again, thank Mary King for being better than that scumbag. So that's why the council voted no a lot of times. So thank you, Mr. Mayor, for that. I want to thank the residents for coming out. As far as, you know, I had to address our brother George Floyd. I won't double back on that, that was said. I will say this, that Thursday. I hope everyone can join us at four P M. on the corner of Strathmore, Euclid. And we've seen around this country where the mayor, mayors and the mayor of Minneapolis has called for arrests and charges on all officers. The police chief called for the arrest and charges of all officers. That rarely happens. All around this country, a lot of officers are putting down the baton and actually hugging and talking to the protesters and things that nature, a lot of that, of course, you won't see a lot of that. So right in the great city of East Cleveland, we have police officers that agree with the people, that feel that all four of those officers who murdered our brother George Floyd, George Floyd, should be should be arrested and charged with murder. Those officers will walk with the people in a peaceful, uh, walk in support of our brother George Floyd. This Thursday, 4:00 PM, assemble at the corner of Strathmore and Euclid and we will march down to City Hall. Make no mistake about it, this is a people's march. But we thank every officer, every elected official, and we hope that our mayor and members of our administration, we invite anyone who feels and who is tired of the assassinations of our brothers and our sisters of all colors by law enforcement, people who are supposed to protect and serve us. I've talked to members of the East Cleveland Police Department and I am very happy and very proud to say that they said that they agree and will walk with us Thursday. Not on the side holding the batons, watching us, not in the car covering over us, but walking with us, calling for a charge to be filed on all officers involved in the murder of George Floyd. In closing, I say again, we are not going to all agree. If these stores are open, in my opinion, City Hall should be open. Even though I do agree with everything the mayor said, I also agree. And it is a unique situation. I also agree with everything that Councilwoman Goudy said. If, and then I add on what I said. If it's been enough of liquor stores to be open, if it's good enough of all these stores and all these capitalistic stores open to make their money, then City Hall should be good enough to open with, I do agree, with plenty of sanitation, plenty of cleaning. Because, I mean, some of us, we cancel the meetings, isn't that? But we still out here in the public with the disease. So we should be having our meetings.
That's correct.
I thank you very much. I appreciate you all. I learned the fact that we can, I learned the fact that we can disagree sometimes and still not yell at each other and all that because this is, again, like I said before, this is a democracy. This is a democracy, not a dictatorship. And we are all responsible for serving and helping address rights needs of the great people.
Mr. Truman, Mr. Smith, I moved at the meeting being adjourned.
I second it.
Thank you very much. I'll second.
Second.
Thank you very much. All in favor? Thank you very much. You have a question.
Good luck at the protest.